Joining us by the online meeting platform, I am Brian Reese, the Chairman of the National Advisory Committee on Occupational Safety and Health, and your moderator for this evening's session. This evening's town hall meeting will be facilitated by senior members of government from various ministries, the labour movement, and the private sector, who I will introduce to you shortly. At this time though, I ask you to please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Please be seated. Before we get into the matter at hand, I would wish to first apologize to our online audience for our late start, but we will be giving that extra time at the end to ensure that everyone is able to participate fully. At this point in time, we also wish as a safety moment to inform you that in the case of any emergency and we have to vacate this particular hall, you'll be asked to leave through the entrance at the rear of the hall behind you, through the car park, and assemble close to the entrance of Alexandra School at Queen Street, where I would ask you to await any further instructions from the staff here. Ladies and gentlemen, as decided by the social partnership at the last meeting on the 27th of July 2021, the Government of Barbados has provided these opportunities in a town hall setting for us as a population to have a discussion on the matter of vaccinations and testing. This topic is, as we all know, at the forefront of the minds of all citizens, not only in Barbados but generally worldwide. This is a topic of conversation. It is historically our approach in Barbados to manage issues through discussion and where possible, to do so dispassionately. It is this style of problem solving that still is the basis of many compliments from other Caribbean nations regarding the disciplined and orderly society for which Barbados is renowned. Tonight, we are joined by senior members of the social partnership and their technical staff, led by the Honourable Santiya Bradshaw, MP, Acting Prime Minister of Barbados. This evening, we will be facilitated by the Honourable Colin Jordan, MP, Minister of Labour and Social Partnership Relations, and members of the Labour Department; Lieutenant Colonel, the Honourable Geoffrey Bostick, MP, Minister of Health and Wellness, and the technical staff of that ministry. As well, we are joined by the Congress of Trade Unions and Staff Associations of Barbados, Mr Dennis Depiza, the General Secretary. We are expecting to also be joined by members from the Barbados Workers' Union and the National Union of Public Workers, who have all agreed to this session, or I should actually say these sessions, for the next two weeks; and also Dr Linda Williams of the Barbados Association of Medical Practitioners. The private sector this evening is represented by Mr Edward Clarke from the Barbados Private Sector Association. The Barbados Manufacturers Association is represented by Ms Chardeboyce; and the Association for Global Business, formerly and more commonly known as BEVA, is represented by Ms Carmel Haynes. We will commence tonight with introductory remarks and a welcome by the Honourable Santiya Bradshaw, Acting Prime Minister of Barbados.
Pleasant good evening to everyone, and particularly the viewers who are watching online and those persons who have taken the time this evening to join us here in person. I want to say thank you to all the members of the social partnership, my colleague ministers, members of the employee representatives, and certainly all of the persons who helped to make the trade union movement and certainly employee representation meaningful in this country. I want to welcome everyone to what is now the first in a series of meetings and consultations which have been organized by the social partnership to discuss what has become one of the most emotional and certainly controversial issues that has confronted this country, I believe since independence. It is impacting on the region, it is certainly impacting on the world as well. When the decision was taken at the last social partnership meeting a few weeks ago to host these consultations, there was consensus amongst government, employer, and employee representatives that the views on the issue of vaccination and testing are so diverse and so complex that no firm positions or even decisions should be taken without extensive consultation with the general public. We know that there are several experts who have taken positions for and against based on their professional knowledge and training. We also know that there are some people out there who find pleasure and comfort in reading and making their own decisions based on a careful assessment of reading and finding their own knowledge, and they want to come to their own conclusions on their own. And in this group, we will always find people who are either for or against a particular issue. And then you have some people who are not so much concerned about the COVID-19 vaccine per se, but simply the principle of whether the choice to be vaccinated should be entirely theirs to make or whether it should be made by others. Some of us, no doubt, have others that we trust, whether it's a family member, a lifelong friend, a doctor, or someone else, and we are comfortable for the most part following that person. That person says you should go get vaccinated, they did it, they went through the trials of doing it, and therefore we feel that we should get it done as well. For others though, the fear of the virus is a real one. It is unknown, lots is unknown about the vaccine, lots is also known about it as well. And there is the fact that we're in this never-ending, or what seems as this never-ending evolution of the pandemic. The fact that we keep hearing about variants, and every time you think that you've kind of gotten things under control, certainly in this administration, there's always something else that we're having to battle. And I know that it is difficult for people to make up their minds and to come to a conclusion. All of what I have referred to is just a fragment of the various scenarios that are driving the debate on the COVID-19 vaccines. The question of who should get the drug, who should not, the way in which it should be allocated or administered, the rights of employers versus employees, and most important, who should make the final decision. I've said all that to say that, to make sure that you all understand that this area is a complex one, it is an emotional one, and it is one that is very personal to many people. I also want to make sure that you also understand that we understand here within the social partnership that as personal as it is to many people, from day one, COVID-19 has presented a situation where each personal decision has had the tremendous potential to impact way beyond the sphere of the individual. And if you think back in the early stages when we were managing this crisis to a number of our elderly population who were in their homes, they hadn't gone anywhere because of persons within the household who had ventured out, who were unvaccinated, they were the recipients of the virus. They never went anywhere, but they died of COVID. It is because we understand and we appreciate all of this that we come to this school hall at Alexandra this afternoon to listen. We are not here to preach to anyone, we're not here to sell one position over the other. We're not here to tell you that one side is right and one side is wrong, but rather, we are here to listen. We want to know what the positions are that you all have on this matter, and we want to know them because we want to make sure that people are comfortable in making decisions which affect them. We also know that there may be information gaps that many of you may feel that, you know, from government's end, from the social partnerships end, that we need to close, and therefore we are willing to listen and to appreciate exactly, whether it's the criticisms or even the suggestions and the recommendations as to how we can make this experience that all of us are confronting for the first time in our lives, a better one. As a society, we've proudly boasted in Barbados since attaining independence in 1966 that our greatest resource is our people. We've talked about how we've punched above our weight, and as a result, both governments from previous administrations have invested heavily in education as a demonstration of faith in our people. We therefore know that many of you have given more than a passing thought to COVID-19 and to the impact of COVID-19 even as we conduct business in this country, and that you might have alternative ideas on how the issue of vaccination and vaccinating others to get our economy moving again can be addressed. The question of how do we assure visitors, who are the backbone of our country's economy, that they're coming to a safe place to visit when our vaccinations rates are around 30% and the countries that some of them are coming from are above 70 in some cases? If it isn't satisfactory for them to come, then the question is, how can you work with us and tell us what are the suggestions in order for us to be able to make the country safe so that the taxi drivers and all of the hoteliers and all of the people who work in the hotel sector can get some revenue being generated in the country again? I want to make it clear that this is not a situation of us versus them. I hear this debate, especially over the course of the last few days. You know, there are tempers that are flaring because people feel that it is a debate about the vaccinated and the unvaccinated, that it is a debate about political parties, or it's a debate about employers and employees, or about representatives of unions. And it is unfortunate that we've gotten to this point where instead of recognizing that we're all going through this across the globe, and we're all facing what we've never faced before, that this really is not a time for division. And I want to just reinforce that, you know, we've not always got it right. None of us, whether, you know, anybody in the social partnership in terms of managing this crisis, there's still a lot that we learn every day, and we're constantly evolving in terms of how we approach the management of this crisis. But I am confident that when you compare us to some of the other countries who have far more resources, that Barbados has stood head and shoulders above the rest. And it has done so because of situations like this, where we're able to gather, to come into a place and to consult, and to share ideas, and to share views, and to do so in a comfortable format, in a way where we are respectful of each other's views, and that we are prepared to act in the interests of our country. And I pray and hope that long shall that be, that these types of forums are encouraged and respected, and that the views of all persons are able to be shared, but that collectively we are able to find a resolution that is conducive to all Barbadians. Mr Moderator, I take the opportunity to thank all of you for coming, and I look forward to hearing the contributions, whether online or in person this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Prime Minister. Ladies and gentlemen, you would observe as well that at the head table, we also have our Chief Medical Officer, Dr Kenneth George, and joining him at the head table also is Dr Lesley Rollock, who is Senior Medical Officer of Health for the North. And we will now ask Dr Rollock to make a presentation on behalf of the Ministry of Health entitled "Let's Talk: Reducing the Risk of COVID-19 in Barbados."
Good afternoon, everyone. The presentation will be an overview of COVID-19 vaccination and testing. The aim of this presentation is to provide information on COVID-19 disease, including how COVID-19 is spread, updates on the state of COVID-19 in Barbados and internationally, how to stay safe, the role of testing, and the role of vaccination. COVID-19, this is a disease which is caused by the SARS-CoV-2 virus, which was first detected in Wuhan, China in 2019. It was first detected because of severe disease. By January 30th, 2020, WHO, the World Health Organization, declared COVID-19 disease a public health emergency of international concern. It reached the Caribbean by March 10th of 2020, 2020, and Barbados by March 17th of that same year. And up to yesterday, two days ago, we can say that that disease has reached every area, known area of our world today. Information from the World Health Organization. All regions of the world are affected, over 203 million confirmed cases and over 4.3 million deaths so far. In Barbados, we've had since March 17th, a total of 4,480 cases with a slight majority of males, 2,303 compared to 2,177 females, and only so far, 48 deaths. To, and we'd like to stay at that number. To monitor the progression of our experience with COVID-19, we've been tracking some markers, and we've been hearing, and you've been hearing about daily cases and averages and rates per 100,000 and positivity rate. If we look at the graph to the right, it is charts of daily cases since the start of this second outbreak, you could call it, from the 30th of December up until August 8th. And you can see at the beginning, there was an explosion, as it were, of cases, up to 200. But over time, the numbers of daily cases has decreased, until we're now down about, just about 10 or so on average. We've also worked out a seven-day average of cases, where we count the cases that are occurring over the past over the past seven days and average them. And every day, we put off the seventh and add another one so that we have a rolling seven-day average. We also monitor the positivity rate, and in this case, it is average. We're looking at the average number of positives over the average number of tests done over a seven-day period. And you can see at the beginning of this outbreak, around the 30th of December, going on to January, February, and so on, positivity rates were high, and they're coming down now over, over time. Till now, today, we are down to 0.68. We actually want the World Health Organization monitors a threshold of 5%, but we actually would like to be zero. You would recognize from the graph on the left that we had touched down close to zero, 0.12. And I think we rejoiced too soon, and it has started to move back up, but we are hoping that we will continue to stay down and keep it down until we can say we are zero for at least two 28 days. The 9.7 per day on average that we are up to would give us a metric of 24 per 100,000 for today, 24 cases per 100,000. I hope that you've recognized, as we have, that COVID-19 is in all the world, and it is also among all types of people. The visual that you can see now, all age groups, all races, or most races, and members of the family. We want you to understand that everyone is at risk of exposure and could have negative outcomes if they become infected. In particular, persons at high risk are those who have frequent close interaction with sick persons, and also with persons who are traveling from places with high levels of cases. However, there's also the spread from asymptomatic cases. So anyone who is in contact with a lot of different people are at risk. And that means us in Barbados because we welcome a lot of guests to our country every year. And in fact, we've been told that the population of Barbados, we've had more than the population of Barbados in visitors in the prior years. Once you've become infected, risk factors associated with poorer outcomes include being overweight. That's what BMI is standing for. The degree of weight or overweight compared to the height of the person. So obesity and levels of overweight are a risk for poor outcomes. The presence of chronic diseases such as hypertension, high blood pressure, diabetes, asthma, chronic lung disease, especially if the conditions are not well-controlled. As we have mentioned, gender, well, you can't really do anything about that. And age, as persons get older, they're more likely to have the chronic diseases that were mentioned. What has been noted is that pregnancy may, they can't say anything more than that. Based on a review of observational studies, COVID-19 may be associated with increased risk of high blood pressure in pregnancy, preterm births, and other adverse pregnancy outcomes, but it could be due to other things and not just the pregnancy alone. So we say pregnancy may, and that's why there's a star by that risk factor. So, since we're all at risk, and we're not sure who is more at risk of adverse outcomes, how can we stay safe? There are layers of protection. And the first one that everybody, every individual probably can put into place are what we call the non-pharmacological interventions. The evidence is well-established for these, and they include the mantras that you know already. Wear your mask, watch your distance, wash your hands. And with wearing masks, we ask, we plead, that you wear your mask even with friends and family, especially if they're not in your own household. You wear your mask at work when you're liming, when you're out in public, and you wear your mask right, covering your nose and your mouth. Covering your nose protects you, covering your mouth protects other people. Mask up, wash up, and move away from other people. Vaccination is also another tool to help keep us safe. In this area of the world, the Americas, we recognize that immunization has brought us significant benefits. We were one, the Americas, were one of the first regions of the world to eliminate polio and to be declared free of measles and rubella. And now, vaccines help us in the management of this infectious disease threat as well. For persons that are vaccinated, the risk of breakthrough infection is reduced. Not zero necessarily, but is reduced. The severity of any disease if a person becomes infected is also reduced so that the likelihood of needing intensive care or dying from that episode of COVID-19 is also reduced. Because the amount of virus that the person may be carrying, the body is preventing it from increasing greatly in their body, is decreased. The risk of transmission from that person is also decreased. And since we have fewer persons that are severely ill, the health system is also prevented from being overwhelmed. All the benefits of vaccination. Our population demographics, the high rate of hypertension, diabetes, and positive large numbers that are reaching old age, elderly population, also puts us at increased risk of catastrophic COVID-19 disease if we have a lot of susceptibles that get infected at any one time. There are approved vaccines for this condition. The World Health Organization has given emergency use authorization to an approved list of vaccines, including Cinafarm, AstraZeneca, Pfizer, Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson, CinaVac, there are others, but these are the ones that will be most familiar, which are available free of cost in the public primary care setting, and are, once available, are freely used by the members of the public in Barbados. Vaccinations, vaccinations generally speaking, once they've been given authorization to be used, are safe to use. In Barbados, just like everywhere else with the vaccines that are being used, we actually monitor for adverse events. There is a committee that does adverse event surveillance, and we have received reports from individuals, from doctors, from medical facilities. Most persons have had mild self-limited effects, mild meaning what you would expect from body pains and aches, maybe fever. And self-limited is in that they go away in about 24 to 48 hours, or maybe three days. Of the 178,000 doses that have been given in Barbados so far, we've had 442 adverse reports received by the committee, three of which have been considered serious, which could possibly be related to the vaccine itself. And if we look at those rates, that is less than, well, three out of 442 reports, less than 1%, but 442 out of 178,000, less than, well, 0.25%. And then three out of the 178,000 is small, 0.017% occurrence. We need to recognize that there, it is accepted that there, for some persons, there are, there is the syndrome of clotting associated with low platelets, which is associated with vaccines, but the risk of clotting associated with COVID-19 itself, disease, is 10 times higher. A brief note about the, about testing now, which is another layer of protection for us. Testing is used to tell us if somebody has symptoms. It is used to determine if persons who have been identified with contacts are actually infected. It is also used in many countries to document fitness for travel or to determine risk categories for travelers, and also to inform the curious or worried person whether they might have COVID-19. It can also be used to monitor the well-being of persons in various spheres of activity. In Barbados, the categories of persons who are tested include primary and secondary contacts, travelers, symptomatic persons, and the curious or worried persons. And while the Ministry of Health and Wellness agrees that there are benefits to testing persons at high risk of exposure, recognize that this is still being discussed, and a policy decision has not yet been made on this. So in summary, COVID-19 presents a significant threat to us, not only to our health system, to us as individuals, but to us as a country. All members of the population have a role to play. Protection will come from various measures, including hygiene, masking, and distancing, which help to reduce spread. Vaccination also, which has an important role in reducing the risk of severe disease and death. And testing, which supports early detection and treatment, thereby improving outcomes. We, as a country, may reach a stage where there are no more susceptibles, or the susceptibles themselves are surrounded by the immune, but we are not there yet. So until that time, all these measures we need to put in place to keep ourselves and Barbados safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rollock. Before we continue, I'd wish to recognize the presence of the Honorable Wilfred Abrams, MP, QC, Acting Attorney General of Barbados. Ladies and gentlemen, our duty here as a panel tonight is first and foremost to listen. We receive from you, the public in attendance, both face-to-face and via our online platform, your views on this topic. The format by which we will be taking your statements or questions will be three remarks, I'm sorry, from the face-to-face audience, followed by three remarks from our online audience, and continuing in that manner. A little bit of housekeeping for the protection and safety of all the persons here at the hall. We will be asking that only three persons stand at one time and approach the various microphones. These microphones will then be sanitized subsequently. We'd also ask you to maintain appropriate social distancing practices, i.e., at least three feet apart when you're wearing your masks. And if you're speaking at the microphone, please ensure that you're, or that you remain six feet away from the person who is using the microphone and may have their mask removed at that time. We further ask that you, if you can, maintain your masks on your faces while you're seated in the auditorium. And if you do need to leave, for whatever reason, because of the issue of your mask being there, that you please just leave and go to the car park for a short while and return. I fully appreciate that you may need to catch a breath to come back in. Kindly also accommodate us by stating your name before you ask your question or make your statement so that we can note this, and if necessary, we can follow up with you on any matters that may require that. Therefore, the question being posed tonight to all persons here and online is, what are your thoughts on getting the COVID-19 vaccination today and the approach to testing for the COVID-19 virus? The floor is open to your comments, ladies and gentlemen. And we'll start with the members of the public here at the auditorium. Now, I know this is a matter that is very much on the minds of all persons, so I hope we're not being shy about this at all because we're all family here as a Barbadian citizenry, and we want to make sure that we're sharing as much as possible. If there are no persons in the auditorium specifically, are there any online questions that we would wish to take? If not... While we prepare for those questions, and we do see that there are participants who have raised their hand, so while we prepare for those questions, maybe I'll ask a question in the meantime. What exactly is the Delta variant? And how does it, what is the issue with regard to its transmissibility? I know the Ministry of Health has been answering so many questions for so many months. They're probably quite fatigued, but we would rely heavily on them to guide us as we think on this matter.
Good afternoon, all. As you are aware, viruses change their constitution over time because their main modus operandi is to try to survive. And therefore, minor changes to the virus occur over a period of time. And this is exactly what we are seeing with COVID. The variant changes usually occur on the outer level or the coating of the virus. And that is associated with infectivity. So over time, the virus learns how to become more infectious. We have had a situation in which the Alpha variant was thought to be a huge problem with respect to persons within communities across the globe. And we have been very clear that the Alpha variant is here. What subsequently took place was that there was genetic, there was changes in the morphology of the virus, and we ended up with the Delta variant. This variant is highly infectious and highly communicable. And therefore, the chance of becoming infected when you have the Delta variant is much higher, probably as much as 10 times higher than the Alpha variant. And therefore, the protective measures remain the same. However, the public, we need the public's help with respect to the variants because the variants, if they are external to Barbados, there is no measure, although we have put measures at the airport, that may not be sufficient. And all persons in Barbados should be aware that there is the potential for the Delta variant to take hold in this country. And that is why we are asking you to use the non-pharmacological methods and to use vaccinations as two public health options to protect yourselves and your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. George. We understand we have a question online from Keisha Walters. We would invite Keisha Walters to make her presentation.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Good evenings, Walters.
Yeah, I thought that I would start off just because it seems like people are shy this evening, but one thing I do want to say is that I'm seeing some great questions in our chat here. in our chat here and I hope that everybody gets a chance to answer them. From my perspective, I wanted to understand the rationale between, because I heard the Acting Prime Minister state that we're not trying to create any level of division and making it a safe place for tourists to want to come here, but I wanted to understand the rationale behind you giving preferential treatment to vaccinated visitors arriving into Barbados over those that are not, considering that with the vaccination, you can still contract the virus, you can still transmit it. And although there's the argument that you're less likely to be hospitalized or contract serious illnesses, global stats are showing, I'm from the UK and I'm following the stats very closely from Public Health England, et cetera, are showing that vaccinated people are being hospitalized and in fact are making up a higher percentage of those hospitalized. So I wanted to understand the rationale there and whether it's something that you're going to be looking at revisiting in light of everything that's been coming to light.
I believe the Ministry of Health will more than likely be able to respond on this question. Just for everyone's benefit, to summarize what Ms. Walters was asking, she asked...
Right, so we have indicated to the public very clearly that vaccines come with some limitations and it is not the be-all or end-all of any public health intervention. And therefore, it is indeed possible for persons to transmit the virus even though they have been vaccinated. So the key take-home points are that if you are vaccinated, you, there is the prevention of serious disease, there is the prevention of intensive care options, and there is the prevention of deaths. So I hope that answers...
...when you're treating vaccinated visitors, suffering to the unvaccinated.
So our protocols are fairly clear. For the vaccinated traveler, the quarantine is for 24 hours. That is dependent on, there are few countries of absolute concern, but for the general vaccinated traveler, 24 hours, and for the unvaccinated traveler, five days. We don't usually make a difference with respect to visitors and nationals because we know that public, from public health, that the virus does not respect race, age, where you come from, your ethnicity, it doesn't see those. So that there is no way that we can be accused of treating different groups differently. That is certainly not the case. Thank you.
Um, sorry, can you still hear me? I don't quite feel like that answered my question because I wanted to know what was the rationale, why you came up with vaccinated people can come in and just have their one-day quarantine, rapid test, and if you're not vaccinated, you've got to be locked up in a hotel room for like six, seven days when both individuals, whether vaccinated or not, can catch COVID, they can transmit it, and vaccinated peoples can be hospitalized. There are global stats that show that. So why is there a preference one over the other when it was said at the beginning that you're not trying to create a divide or give any kind of siding or preference to one over the other? But at the moment, that's what's being done. And just for the reference, I'm sitting in my hotel room on day five right now. And then I also asked, are you looking at revisiting this? Like based on the fact that there are lots of stats that show that vaccinated people are making up in some countries, the higher percentage of people in hospital, is it something that you're going to be looking at? Seeing as though we want to recuperate tourism in the country, I get that we have to be safe, but I also need to understand the rationale behind giving one person preference over the other when both can transmit and contract and end up in hospital.
So both can transmit and we are in agreement with that. I think it's about management of risk and we understand that the vaccinated traveler is less likely to transmit disease and we had said that. So that it is about managing risk. The decisions that how long a person remains in quarantine is not taken lightly in Barbados. This is done by a team of very competent public health officials. And if you follow what has been occurring in the region, Barbados has done well. We are just asking the public's cooperation, but if you compare what has happened with many of our brothers and sisters in the Caribbean, our small team here, our hard-working team here, has tried to use the international available evidence and also the evidence that we have in country to come up with our protocols. And I'm going to tell you this, so far, I am happy with where we are at with our protocols. We continue to review them on a weekly basis to determine if there are any issues that are changing internationally and what are the issues that are occurring in Barbados. We have told the public that persons who are vaccinated can get disease. We have said that. What we are asking the public to understand is that the likelihood of poor outcomes remains much less. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. George. Moving on to our next online question, and the name we are seeing is Kerry Ost. We're not sure if the last name is an abbreviation, but Kerry Ost.
My question is about the transmission. You said that the vaccinated person can still transmit it, but what is, and the slide before had said, it is going to be transmitted at, the transmission is more reduced, but you didn't say reduced by how much? Is it reduced by 50%? Is it reduced by 95%? No, that is one of the questions going on to what I have to ask. If the vaccinated person can still transmit the virus and they're getting the PCR tests and the rapid test...
Sorry, Ms. Ost, could you repeat the question once again? I'm sorry, we were having some difficulties hearing you.
Okay.
My apologies.
No problem. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. The, I have seen you were talking about the transmission for the vaccination. The people that have vaccinated, transmission rate. You said in the slide before that it is, the transmission for a vaccinated person is reduced, but you didn't say by how much?
So is that your first question? What is the difference in the transmission rate between a vaccinated person versus an unvaccinated person?
Yes, that was my first question.
Okay, so let me, let me start with that one. There is no, the rate of transmission from a person that is infected depends on the person themselves, the rate of infection in that person, how much virus they're producing. So for an individual, I can't say, well, your rate is going to be 10% or 50% less than. On average, it might be half the rate of an unvaccinated person, but for one person to the next, all we can say is that as long as that person's immune system is healthy, it would be less than, but I can't say by less, by what percentage. I didn't understand a bit about the testing, the question about the testing.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rollock. We'd also ask that those persons online who wish to ask questions or make statements, kindly raise your hand in the chat so that we will be able to identify you and then also be able to call you to speak. We have one more question from the online audience, and that is from Rodney Franklin before we switch to the audience within the Alexandra School Hall. Rodney Franklin, please.
Please, one of the leaders.
Mr. Franklin, are you still there? You may, have you unmuted? We're going to go ahead to take one question that we have here in the hall and we can come back to Mr. Franklin afterwards. Sir?
Good evening to all. Let me first commend the...
Sorry to cross you. Could you please state your name just for our record, please?
Michael Mann.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm part of the St. Peter district. Let me first commend the administration for providing a platform so that persons, the laypersons, can have an opportunity to share and to voice their concerns. I came here with a sole purpose, and I'm being quite honest and frank with you, in regards to the first question that was asked, Carissa. Those who feels it knows it, I'm part of the traveling public and I think it's very discriminatory for persons who are not vaccinated as it relates to the mandatory period that you have to stay in isolation and those who are not. I say this to say that from a layman's perspective, it does not simply add up. How is it that a person who is vaccinated has the same risk of transmitting the virus, have the same, that you, I've heard from the panel, that there is no information, no, nothing to confirm the fact that persons who are vaccinated can transmit the coronavirus? In fact, just last week, there was an article, a letter to the newspaper, a certain gentleman who was part of the military, he was commending and lauding the efforts done at Harrison Point. But in his preamble, having, before he applauded him, he said that he was tested 19 times, all negative, he is fully vaccinated, and yet he's up there in Harrison Point. The facts are there. There are persons who are vaccinated and they are carrying and transmitting the virus. So why are they being let off the hook that you're allowed to stay just 48 hours with a rapid test and you're allowed to leave while a person who have the same risk factor is being mandated to spend five days at their own expense, the minimum five days, in an isolated center in order to have access to come out and to be with their family or to be part of the environment? I've tried to get it all over, but nobody seems to answer and be very frank. I'm concerned this evening that there apparent is a policy before people. And I think the indication of the turnout simply states that there are persons who are mistrusting the system, persons who have been misinformed, and there are persons who feel that this is just another talk shop, which is unfortunate because I would have believed after the march that took place Saturday, that many more concerned persons would have been out here to voice their concern. But obviously, there seem to be some, some distancings. I, I don't know whether, because facts are not being presented, it doesn't add up, or for some reason, you are not engaging the laypersons. You, you are missing the mark somewhere that persons who are seeking honest answers, it is either being deflected, there are smokescreens that are being created not to be pointed in terms of answers to questions, as I said, in relationship to the first question that was, that was asked, and I'm still awaiting an answer. I sat here, I listened, and still I did not get an answer. Why is this discrimination occurring? And it seems as though policy is over persons who are shut up into a hotel over five days, cannot come out of the hotel room, have to provide for their meals, want to be part of the Barbados experience, whether you're a foreigner or, well, those are the foreigners, but persons who are, who are part of the society, wants to be back home with their family, and yet the administration is not telling us exactly, even based on science, that if this is not discriminatory.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. I think we can open the floor, the panel for their response.
So when Canada put there what persons would describe as draconian measures for persons traveling to Canada, we complied. We went to Canada and we spent 10 days in quarantine and you had to do it at your own expense. That is a fact. In Barbados, we have a shorter quarantine time because, as I indicated, it, this was not done fly-by-night. This was done after much consideration and it is based on a risk assessment. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone? I'm sorry, go on.
Yeah, good evenings. Right, the, let me respond to this question. I'm not a public health official and that's why I, I give way to public health officials. But when you are a small country without all of the resources to fight a battle, and I dare say even large countries without the resources to fight a battle, you then have to take decisions that are based on managing risk and the risks that you are able to deal with based on your capacity to respond. That's the first point I would like to make. The other point is that Barbados does not operate in isolation. We are part of a region called Caricom. We are part of a global community. And Barbados is not the only country that is taking measures similar to what we are taking. Indeed, I will go as far as to say that Barbados has been adding an additional layer to its protocols that is not observed in several other countries in relation to testing on arrival at Grandly Adams International Airport. Our protocols are based on what we are seeing internationally and based on our own experience nationally. And we would have had tens of thousands of persons arriving, fully vaccinated, and several persons arriving who are unvaccinated. We took a policy decision that based on the risk that we can take, that this was the route that we were going to go. And this is something that has to be factored into any equation. What is it that you can manage based on your capacity? When we first started out on the COVID journey, for example, we didn't have tests, testing kits, there were no vaccines. So in order to manage the risks that we face, we decided to go a particular route, which was enhance surveillance at ports of entry and the same things that Dr. Rollock would have spoken to, those are the things that we've done. There are countries, including countries in this region, where people who are positive are allowed to isolate at home. We took a decision based on our capacity and based on our community and our culture that we would not go that route because we felt that that would be detrimental to the national good. So that we, when you are managing a crisis, you have to be able to manage that crisis, taking into consideration your capacity and how much risk you are prepared to take.
Thank you, Mr. Vostik. I think, Mr. Mann, you, I'm sure... I think, Mr. Mann, you, I'm sure you'll be able to respond to the health officials afterwards, if you have ideas yourself that you think you wish to share to improve the situation as well. But I think the response on risk is the basis of all of the decisions made so far, and I think is a worthwhile attempt to manage the issue at hand. I want to take one other question from the online audience here, and it's a question from Kyabaskam, Kyra Bascom, I'm sorry, Kyra Bascom. And Kyra Bascom asks, are rapid tests available to the public so that they may test themselves if need be? Will they ever be available?
So currently, we don't accept rapid home-based tests. There are a lot of tests on the market, huh? We don't accept self-administered tests because frequently you may not get a good enough sample, and we don't accept home-based kits. That doesn't mean that that may change at another point in time as we get more information. We accept rapid PCR tests, standard PCR tests, and antigen tests, and each of those tests have their definite indications. So that, for example, antigen tests are used in primary contacts on persons with symptoms. PCR tests are the gold standard and continues to be the gold standard. So there are slightly different indications, but at this point in time, it is not recognized. Home-based testing or self-testing is not recognized in Barbados.
Thank you, Dr. George. I'd like to ask Pauly Baldi online to present his question.
Good evening, everyone. My question is as follow-
My apologies, Ms. Baldi.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you well. I was apologizing for saying Mr. Baldi. My apologies.
Okay. My question is as follow. Taking from the previous person online who put forward question to your panel, we still don't have, seem to have any clear idea on the percentage of risk between vaccinated and unvaccinated person, one. Second thing, as far as quarantine is concerned for non-vaccinated, most countries in continental Europe allow people to go to their own residence because not everybody lives in small homes. That's one question. Also, when Minister Bostick was emphasizing that, you know, so far Barbados may have difficulties in letting people quarantine at home, I think we should also make some judgment of the good and common sense of the public at large. And one other question is, we have to, let's say, give assurance to the general public that, you know, this vaccine have some sort of effect because the point is of the 48 deaths that we have had in Barbados so far since March last year, we were only told today we had two deaths, next day we had one death. But do you, as Ministry of Health, have a spreadsheet where you say, okay, the age group was these, so many had one comorbidity, so many had three comorbidity, and so forth? So people will understand better also the idea toward death because not everybody that has got COVID has end up dying or had serious consequences, what they call long COVID. You know, between the confusion created by media and many actors in all this scenario that has been going on for the past two years, there is very little mention of the 98-point-something percentage of people that recover. And that is the problem. And also, the issue is, you look at the Journal of Medicine, the WHO, and all official documents, they still say that bottom line, what is important is, you know, to keep proper hygiene and look after your own health and, you know, try to avoid perhaps crowded, small places and so on.
So Ms. Baldi, in summary, would you wish to share with us a specific statement to our question that we can respond to right away?
Yes, I send it in writing from the Journal of Medicine concerning people who have immunodepress issue. Because, for example, from the Journal of Medicine, it is stated, if you look in the chat, my question has reported, you know, there has not been sufficient testing on immunodepress people and their reaction to vaccine. Because, for example, in continental Europe, people who are heavily immunodepressed are requested to be in hospital for two days and not just 15 minutes and be monitored by two doctors. So I am sure that there are immunodepressed people in Barbados.
So maybe let's receive a response from the Ministry of Health to what you have suggested so far.
All right, there've been a few statements in that presentation. One of the things that were mentioned was home isolation of persons that are ill, persons going to their homes are home isolation. We isolate persons who are, have COVID, whether they are vaccinated or not, because the vast majority of Barbadians are not vaccinated, and it's to isolate them away from the susceptibles, to protect the others that are not vaccinated that they're isolated, that they go to isolation. We've had experience with persons, some of them with requesting home quarantine, that don't understand, apparently, that quarantine means to stay home, not go to the supermarket, not go anywhere. We are not willing to take those chances, so a lot of persons are not allowed to home quarantine. There are specific categories, and because our, a lot of our population is still susceptible, we need to protect that. We need to protect our country because we can't, we can't afford to have a whole mass of persons getting sick one time. Although it is true that everybody will not get severely ill, we can look at you and determine who will get severely ill and who will not, and once they get severely ill, they're going to need medical care at the lone tertiary care facility that we have, and once that's overrun, we are going to be in severe, well, we have a saying in Barbados, we're part of, we're going to be in real trouble, and it's going to be difficult to come back from that. The, the risk of vaccinated persons transmitting is less than the risk of unvaccinated persons transmitting. There are multiple studies, I had a chance to look it up while we were, while we were waiting between questions, and there are studies in Israel, where the biggest studies, studies in the UK, studies in the US, smaller, that rates of decrease in transmission between vaccinated and unvaccinated, fully vaccinated and unvaccinated, range from 75 to 90% reduction. So this is the basis that we take the, the chance with vaccinated persons, make, trying to make sure they don't have the virus when they arrive, and then within 24 hours allow them to go, and the unvaccinated who can be carrying and that they're quarantined for a bit longer. You can do the studies with the-
So the other question you mentioned was the types of persons who end up with COVID and actually die. And I, we have indicated on many occasions that these persons tend to have the following characteristics. They're either obese, elderly, persons with uncontrolled diabetes and hypertension, and persons with other chronic illnesses. And that has been our, that has been a worldwide phenomenon, and that is very similar in Barbados. Fortunately, we have had only one case of a very sick child with COVID, the multi-system complex, as was reported. But in general, the persons who have died of COVID tend to be persons with many chronic illnesses, diabetes, hypertension, and appears to be additive. The more chronic illnesses you have, the likely, the increased likelihood of a poor outcome. And the other one is that obesity appears to be a risk factor here. Thank you.
But just one last question. The lady who spoke before Dr. George mentioned the case of Israel, and Israel had a fantastic vaccination campaign, and now they have a lot of cases hospitalized of fully vaccinated people. So there is still some numbers that don't seem to be adding up when we look at the broader picture. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baldi. I don't know if Mr., if Dr. George or Dr. Rollock would like a follow-up opportunity here on that?
No.
No? I'm going to take one further question as well from our online audience. I'm going to read it to you. It's from Natalie Burke. And Natalie Burke says, "Good evening. Why is it that other viruses and diseases for which vaccines were developed were eradicated, and this is not the case for COVID-19 virus? What could be the cause of this?"
So we are early in, we are still on a steep learning curve, and the eradication of polio took decades, the eradication of measles took decades. I just want to make, it's eliminated in our region. I just want to make this comment. About four or five years ago, there was a big outbreak of measles in the United Kingdom and in Western Europe. Several children died. We were confident, however, that in Barbados, we could have weathered the storm. Why? Because we had one of the most comprehensive childhood immunization programs within the region. We have gotten international accolades for this, and therefore, I was confident that it could not take hold. And that was a time when people were traveling with their kids and so forth, we were able to manage that situation. The final take on COVID, we are still learning. We are going to learn about side effects, long-term side effects of COVID because we are only in the pandemic for a year and a half. We don't know if there are going to be longer-term effects. There are still tremendous unknowns about the disease. But what we know, and based on the evidence that we have looked at, there are two things you can do to protect yourselves, and those were clearly stated in the thing.
Thank you very much, Dr. George. We have also joining us on our online platform, Mr. Curtis Long. Curtis Long. And before Mr. Long begins, I just want to again invite the members of the public here within the hall to, please, we have many microphones here and probably we've not used one of them, or more than one of them, I should say, for the evening. We invite you to come and make as much of a contribution as you would wish to make as well. Mr. Long? Mr. Long, please make sure that you've unmuted your microphone.
I believe I have. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear now. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Can somebody maybe elaborate on, on how accurate is the PCR test at differentiating between COVID, COVID-19, and say influenza?
It's a very specific test. So the test for, the PCR test is a very specific test, and when we say in Barbados I tell persons, if we say you have COVID, you probably do have COVID. Our laboratory, right, our laboratory is, I have full confidence in our laboratory methods, and it is very specific for COVID so that I don't think it's going to be mixed up with influenza. So you can't miss because Dr. Rollock is saying that you're actually testing for the gene type information, which would be specific to the coronavirus that causes COVID. What we have noticed is that we are not, because persons are wearing more masks frequently, et cetera, that we are not getting of acute respiratory diseases at present because I believe that persons are masking up, and we encourage you to continue to do that, particularly in workplaces, where we have found that those are sometimes some hotspots.
Thank you, Dr. George. We'd now like to invite Juliette Small from the online audience. Juliette Small?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I have three questions I would like to ask. The first question, if after consultation, the government does decide to make it mandatory that we take the vaccine, would individuals have a choice in which vaccine they get to take? That's my first question. The second question, again, if the vaccine is made mandatory, if persons have severe adverse effects, would any person be held liable for the adverse effects which these persons may receive? And thirdly, after the consultation with the public here in town hall meetings, how would the decision, the final decision be made on whether or not the vaccine is being made mandatory?
Shall we take your third question first?
Okay, so let us start with the understanding that the laws that exist in Barbados now in most of the world did not contemplate this situation. So we're in what we call uncharted territory, and we have to find a way forward that respects the rights of all and tries to preserve the rights of as many people and as many different groups as we can. At the end of the day, a way forward has to be found that tries to accommodate Barbados as a whole, our economy, the state of our citizens, and our way of life. Now, it is not that the government is looking to try to impose anything on anyone, and I just want to clear from now, there seems to be this misconception out there that there is some policy of the government right now in respect of mandatory vaccines or forcing people to take vaccines. Nothing could be further from the truth at all. I'm also hearing people saying, why don't we come to the people and discuss it? But that's what we're doing right here. There are different views that contend. The private sector has its own interest group that is looking about trying to get business back on track, and what do they need to do to do that? Labor has its own constituents that say, we are employees, we don't usually have a seat at the table, we don't have a hand in making the decisions, but the decisions that we make in respect of vaccinations are going to affect us as well. The average citizen in Barbados is very concerned about it. I don't think we've ever had this much concern about anything in Barbados. This is the hot topic. And what we're trying to do here now is to hear from everyone, hear not only the questions, but also suggestions, because at the end of the day, we have to proceed in a direction or in a series of related directions. related directions. What that looks like, we are trying to put that together based on the feedback we get from the persons who attend these town hall meetings and who were in virtually and who give their opinion. At the end of the day, all those opinions must contend. The perfect situation would be that coming out of this, we are all on the same page, right? But we unlikely to all be on the same page. So what we have to look for is a compromised position that accommodates as many persons as possible while also still respecting persons with specific interests, like religious or medical or what have you. So I don't want you to be too focused at this point in time as if there is a decision, because there has not been a decision. I can say now on behalf of all the ministers here, and the acting prime minister will back me up, right? The government does not have a policy position as it stands now in respect of mandatory vaccination of anybody. That is what we are doing here through these meetings. We want to hear from you, what your suggestions are. Colin may have his idea of what should happen. Jeffrey may have his. Dr. George may know what he wants to do. Ed at the bottom there might have his own position. But at the end of the day, there may be a position held by one of you in the audience or held by somebody online that we have not thought of. Some other combination of factors that we can put together. So I would, at this point in time, this is the first of the town hall meetings, I would like us to not approach it as if there is a foregone conclusion or what do we do if? I would prefer that at this point in time that we take suggestions, we take full discussions, ask the questions that you want to ask, to put you in an informed position to perhaps ask other questions or to perhaps come up with a solution. And I just want to make one thing as well clearly. People are talking about forced vaccinations. This government and successive governments of Barbados have respected the rights of individual and the rights of society. No one is going to hold you down and stick a needle into your arm. And I've been hearing that on the street, that people are going to be forced to take a vaccine, physically forced, that there'll be criminal charges if they don't do it. No one can hold you down and stick a needle in your arm. You have rights with respect to your body, but equally, other persons have rights with respect to theirs and business owners have rights with respect to theirs as well. So let us just concentrate now on just hearing. My suggestion is, let's just hear all of the contending views, all of the suggestions, and let's put ourselves in a position where we have as many things to weigh as we can so we can come to perhaps what is the best decision for the majority of people.
Ms. Small, I believe your other question related to if there were any adverse effects from taking the vaccination. Would one of the panelists wish to respond to that? If the, I believe the question specifically was whether the government would be, would take some responsibility insofar as taking care of persons who saw adverse effects. And I'm guided as well by the AG.
I think the specific question was if there'd be some liability, effectively if you could sue somebody if you got sick. Now, we've been at pains to point out and be as frank as we can be as to what the effects of the vaccination are. Dr. George has over and over again said, you know, the risk in taking the vaccination as anything else. Before you take the vaccination, you go through a process where they ask you a whole set of questions to identify if you are one of the persons who might be at risk for some adverse effect of the vaccination. But at the end of the day, I think, Dr. George, what we perhaps need to do to deal with this particular question is, once again, as we're having this discussion, just put out all of the information once again about the vaccine, the effects of the vaccine, the pros, the cons of the vaccine, so that people can understand. But with respect to who would be liable, if, I think we are a little bit ahead of the curve on that one, and that, I guess, depends on the eventual position taken, but we are not there yet. We're in the process of trying to arrive at a position, but we are not there yet. So to answer that question might be a little bit precipitous.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick. Ma'am, you asked a couple of questions. Your question in relation to the vaccines and the choice of vaccines. First of all, we have a problem in terms of the availability of vaccines. And because of that, more often than not, there are not many choices. We have to use what we have available. But your questions are valid questions, except for me to say to you that the process for public health measures and policy in this pandemic, those recommendations come from the Ministry of Health, the Emergency Operations Committee of the Ministry of Health, and they go to the Cabinet Subcommittee through me as minister, and then ultimately they go to Cabinet. And they, obviously, they're discussed with the social partnership. This is the way that we've been doing it, and this is the way that we think is best for us. But we cannot provide specific answers to your questions, because even at the level of the Emergency Operations Committee of the Ministry of Health and Wellness, we have never discussed anything in relation to mandatory vaccinations. And so we are not in a position to provide you with those precise answers. But the discussions that come forth from these things will obviously contribute towards whatever discussions we have, but it's not going to be taken lightly. And whatever we recommend will be based on the scientific evidence and the concerns of all persons whenever that thing comes about. We have not made any decision or even discussed it. And I wanted to make that clear, so that you don't think that there's anything here. There's a process for doing this, and this is just part of that process right now.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick. Of course, as with these types of things, the pace is now heating up. So we have to ask that you restrict yourself to either one suggestion or question when you approach the microphone, or we will only be taking one question or suggestion from those in the online chat. Because we do have a limited amount of time this evening, but we do have many opportunities still to come for the remainder of this week and next week as well. I believe we do have someone here within the auditorium who wishes to speak. Ma'am, if you could approach the mic and just share your name with us first?
My name is Vireen Mann.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
Vireen Mann. Vireen Mann.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Right. Now, my question was to Dr. George, but then you say you're not in the process of mandating vaccines as yet. However, you also said, I don't remember the guy's name, you say, Mr. Jordan?
Wilfred Abrams.
Right. But he said that there's nobody's going to be forcing people to take the vaccine. Now, you talk about physical force, but what about mental and psychological force? I see especially one supermarket here in Barbados is already doing, Elsie Hill, where they are telling their employees, "Take the vaccine or take a test every two weeks." Now, you know the kind of workers that they have. They cannot afford to take a test every two weeks if they refuse or do not, I shouldn't say refuse, if they choose not to take the vaccine. So therefore, you're telling me, "Leave the job." Basically, that's what you're saying. You're not writing it in words. You're not spelling it out like that. But in the end, that's what you're telling me. Now, Dr. George said that for a time to come, we will learn about the side effects of the vaccine. That's true. Therefore, I am saying, if that's the fact, everyone knows that's the fact, I should have the right to choose or the right to refuse the vaccination, knowing what I am also risking. And I think people on the street, that's what they want to know, that yes, I have the right to choose, and when I choose, I know what my risks are. I have the right to refuse, and when I refuse, I also know what my risks are. And we are not forced to, and I should not be forced, because I, this is what people are saying right now on the streets. Oh, the ones that are vaccinated are good. The ones that are not vaccinated, they don't care about other people. And that's the thing we get from you guys, too, because you say, "Oh, we have to think about the other person. But what about me? If I do not want the vaccine, who is thinking about me?" So therefore, I think that we have to look at the rights of all, and you should not let one person's right override another person because they do not, they're not doing what you, quote unquote, think they should do.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. I think that actually corroborates everything that our attorney general had shared before. So I don't think that that necessarily requires a response unless the attorney general feels that way.
Just two things. I think we probably, this is probably inappropriate time to bring in the private sector into this discussion. But the other thing as well is, while we are encouraging you to share with us, I will ask that we don't name names in the course of this discussion, because there's certain legal issues that follow from that. So you can speak about a business place, right? You can speak as specifically as you want without actually naming or pointing. So I'm just going to ask that for anybody here or anybody online, because we want as full a discussion as possible while preserving everybody else's rights. And I need to be able, or we need to be able to answer you once again without actually targeting or pointing at a specific person. So I'm going to ask the private sector.
Mr. Clark, would you wish to make a contribution?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I think we need to look at this whole COVID, the perspective that none of us really know where this is going. We know where it's come from, but we have no idea right now what's going to evolve. We thought we had it under control here. It got out of control. I think we are getting it back under control. But in all reality, members of the audience, Barbados lived in a bubble, and that's why we brought it under control. We lived in an unsustainable bubble. Our country was dying. The economy decimated. Ninety-five percent of hotel and tourism businesses decimated. We have seen the impact on what has done to unemployment in Barbados. Thirty thousand, forty thousand people unemployed in Barbados. It is not sustainable. In our opinion, if we are going to survive this COVID, the economy is going to survive. Our employees are going to be able to get back jobs, and this country can continue to grow and develop in a sustainable fashion. We have to welcome back visitors to our island. If we are going to welcome back visitors to Barbados, we need to set rules and regulations for them. That's what the protocols are all about. In our opinion, based on the science that we have been given from all of the medical personnel, all the experts, people that are vaccinated have less chance of catching COVID than those that are vaccinated. There's significant evidence to support that. People that are vaccinated have less chance of being in the ICUs than those that are unvaccinated. There's significant evidence to support that. In that, bearing that in mind, you need to understand what that means to Barbados. Barbados is a very small island. We live on a rock here with limited resources. We have Harrison's Point facility, which the government did a remarkable job to put in place at very short notice. We have Queen Elizabeth Hospital, limited resources, which should be utilized for other major medical attention in Barbados. If we need to open our borders fully, which we have done, if Barbados is going to come out of this, we need to welcome back tourism. There's a big risk. There is a risk. Yes, the lady earlier, there's a risk between vaccinated and unvaccinated. I don't have to argue that. The facts are there. But there's a risk that we take, and it means that we could be spreading COVID again in Barbados. It is my belief as an individual person and as the private sector's belief that that means that people that are vaccinated present less of a risk to this country's medical resources. It presents less of a risk to our businesses in Barbados. It presents lesser risk to unemployment growing in Barbados. And it presents lesser risk to decimating this country and the growth prospects this country will ever have going forward. And that is why we in the private sector believe that vaccines should be put in place, especially for those people on the front line. The medical workers, the immigration, the customer servicing people, the healthcare, the teachers, people like that on the front line of Barbados. That is what we believe. Now, everybody would agree with us, and I understand and respect people's individual decisions. But then, if you have no choice and you have no desire to get vaccinated, you know, the consequences are there for you. They're there for you. And the problem is that then we in the private sector, our businesses are at risk. We stand liability if we don't try to protect our clients and our employees in the workforce. And I mean, I know the legal opinion is being worked on, and I look forward to hearing that legal opinion. And we will hear that in the very near future, so that by month's end, we will have a position from the private sector on whether things can be done. Right now, it is an open page, and we are listening to everyone. I've made some notes from some comments online and sent comments here this evening, and that is what we are here about. No decision has been made finally. We have a position that we believe should be done, but we need to follow rules and regulations and the laws of the country, and that's what the private sector is prepared to do. But in closing, I want to say, the risk of not being vaccinated at this time in Barbados is too great for us to take. I think the issue is, we need to get additional vaccines. That is a risk that we have at this time. But we really need to have vaccinations in Barbados to stop the widespread of COVID if we do intend to reopen the borders fully going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I think it would be remiss of us if we didn't invite some response as well from Mr. DePisa from C2 Saab.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm happy that the acting attorney general restated the government's position that there's no policy on mandatory vaccinations in place. And it's important that that was restated, because we believe that any arbitrary changes to the conditions of service of an employee, terms of conditions of work, and even to a collective bargaining agreement, can only be construed as being provocative and discriminatory. As a matter of fact, it is absurd and insulting that any employer should undertake to trade off really the freedom of choice of an individual for thirty pieces of silver. I think that this is an act which we can say is borders on bribery and is offensive. But having said all that, the Congress of Trade Union Staff Association of Barbados, nonetheless, we want to encourage all Barbadian citizens, residents, and members of the workforce to consider immunization as an option against the viral infection. We must reiterate the point that in the absence of existing law or the contractual agreement, no employer has the lawful authority to coerce, intimidate, or to take any punitive action against an employee who refuses to take the vaccine. I think that position is one that you have to put front of. It's clearly one that has brought a level of discomfort among the workforce. We understand the need to strike a balance in terms of getting people at work and the employer to exercise a right to provide a safe environment. But at the end of the day, the law prevails. And what the law requires is what we should follow, and we should have to find ways around the problem. And that is why we are here, to discuss and to put ideas on the table so that the policymakers can find some solutions, not a solution, but there has to be a number of them that may come to the table, and we have to determine, make a determination, which of those solutions is the best fit for the time.
Thank you, Mr. DePisa. Now, we also have further representation on the, in the online forum, and we have Tyson Eiffel next. Mr. Eiffel? Mr. Eiffel, are you still there? If not, we will move next to Mr. Michael Low. I'm sorry, did we get the name correct? Is it Michael Low?
Holford.
My apologies, Mr. Holford. Michael Holford.
Yes. All right. Good evening to the panelists and all the guests who are here. I've been listening and based on all that I've been hearing, it would appear to me that you are saying that the vaccines along with masks, along with sanitization, along with social distancing is all, are all the factors that you've put into consideration based on the risk assessment. And therefore coming to this position, this is why, not that there's a mandate, but there is a strong request of the public to exercise these various areas so that we cut down the risk of the spread of this virus. I believe the challenge that I'm hearing though, from persons who are in opposition, from persons who are hesitant to take the vaccination, from persons who believe that there is a discrimination, which in a sense there is, between the vaccinated and the unvaccinated, is that they're saying that they're seeing studies which oppose these things, studies which show that unvaccinated, or I'm sorry, vaccinated persons can spread the virus. My question to you, have any of you as medical officials, experts in this area seen opposing studies, opposing peer reviewed studies where you can say, yes, we've seen the studies, yes, we've seen what scientists have gleaned in the short term, but we believe these other studies, these other observations that we have, we have collected give us a greater, a greater sense of confidence in what we are presenting? Because I think if we have the public saying that they're seeing information and your only response is, well, you have other information and you're going with that, it can lead the public to believe that you're not taking into consideration the things that they are seeing as well. So that is my question. If you are seeing these other types of studies that may be out there and if there are opposing views based on what you, what you, what you see?
Yeah, Mr. Holford, thank you for that. There are studies that were referenced just now that show that the rate of transmission from vaccinated persons is between seventy-five to eighty-something, ninety percent less than infected persons who are vaccinated are less likely, seventy-five to eighty-something percent, up to ninety percent less likely to transmit than unvaccinated persons. But clearly, the persons are referencing the twenty-five percent. If a study says the risk is decreased to seventy-five percent, they're referencing the twenty-five percent that are still transmitting. We can't say that a vaccinated person will not, not at all, but we say that the risk based on the same peer reviewed studies multiple that it is reduced significantly compared to persons that are unvaccinated. And it's not me saying that, I mean, I am speaking, but it's not my study. I am referencing peer reviewed studies that, that say that. But I guess persons want to hear certain things, so they, they focus on the twenty-five percent or the twenty percent or the ten percent that are still transmitting.
Thank you, Dr. Rolla. We next invite, the person's name is Dee Brown online. Dee Brown?
Good afternoon.
My apologies again. We're getting some incorrect names here and I apologize for giving those names out. Mr. Broome, I'm sorry.
That's correct. I just want to ask a question in relation to, in relation to the Delta variant. Is my understanding that the Delta variant is the new variant? When they say new variant, apparently the way it has changed and mutated, it appears to be unlike any other of the COVID-19 viruses. And therefore there are continuous studies being done as to its transmissibility and it appeared to be as transmissible as smallpox. There's the most recent study that apparently has been unleashed. My problem, my question is, how are these variants being measured in Barbados? What is the frequency of their measurement that you can determine how widespread the activity of the variant is locally? Because the Delta variant apparently is extremely transmissible. It is very deadly. It attacks both the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. And therefore, understanding where it is, how it's moving in the community is of great importance. I have other questions, but I understand that you're on a long one, so I would like a response in relation to that specific question.
Thank you, Mr. Broome.
Thanks for your question, Mr. Broome. In relation to the variants Delta and the others, the first thing is that I need to tell you that it is the positive cases. A person tests positive and then those samples are dealt with through the genomic sequencing and testing to determine if the, a particular variant or if any variant is here on island. And we've been sending samples because this, we don't have the capacity regionally. So CARFAR, Caribbean Public Health Agency, they are responsible for collecting the samples from all of the CARICOM countries and those samples are tested at the laboratory at the St. Augustine Campus University at Bestin Hospital. So that is where it is done for CARICOM and we've been sending samples there. There's only a limited number that we can send at any one time and that is how we were able to determine initially the presence of the alpha variant, which played a significant part in the outbreak that we had back in January, February. Subsequent to that, we sent additional samples and we were able to determine other variants that were, that were imported to the island. And those samples and the persons who those samples came from, we, for those that we were able to test, those persons would have been persons in quarantine and isolation. They went from quarantine on arrival straight to isolation and then we got the test results back so that all of the work would have been done dealing with the designated quarantine places that those persons would have been at. We also have been able to increase capacity by having an agreement with a lab in Canada, thanks to some members of the diaspora. And we've been, we started the process of sending samples to Canada for testing. And then through Pahoe, our lab here, the Best Dos Santos Lab now has the capacity to screen for variants, to do a screening, test for variants. And we've been screening the positive cases that we've been seeing here in Barbados since that capacity was added to our arsenal. And we would then send positive samples to CARFAR for confirmation and that is what we've been doing. But in addition to that, the government made a decision late last year that the Best Dos Santos Lab should have and must have the capacity to do its own genomic testing and sequencing. And a sum of money was set aside to give the lab that capacity by purchasing the equipment and the equipment has been ordered from Canada. And through the same sources we have in Canada, training has been established, first of all, through a virtual platform to be able to train staff and persons here to, to do that. And then there will be some face-to-face training because we believe that we must have the capacity, not only for the testing of variants for ourselves, but to assist also in the region and to take our testing to another level and even include research. So that is what we've been dealing with so far, based on the capacity that we have, limited as it is, and based on what has been made available to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. I think as a follow-on from that, we have a question from Dion Connell online and Dion asks, what is the rate of false positive with the PCR tests?
I don't know. So when I don't know, I, I will find out that information. There is always, for any test, there's always a false positive and a false negative rate. And I will try to find that information between now and the next meeting.
So Dion, if you follow us again on Wednesday, Dr. George has promised to provide that I'd like to move now to Gordon Ashby, Gordon Ashby online.
Thank you very much. Madam Prime Minister, Ministers Abraham, Boston, Jordan, Esteem Panal and the public of Barbados, whoever's listening to my voice, I feel like I've woken up in a bad dream. Why is the private sector putting my Prime Minister in this position to have to discuss this? It is outrageous that we are meeting to discuss this lunatic proposition of mandatory injections. You cannot mandate something that has emergency use recommendation by the Caribbean Regulatory Agency. You cannot mandate something that has no long-term testing. How can you be discussing mandating an injection that could give me a blood clot in my brain or kill me? This is outrageous. I just feel like I don't know what is, I'm going mad now. The private sector will come again because you see this foolishness happening all around the world. You think Barbados must do that? We are original. We must think for ourselves. We cannot follow the ignorance that's happening around the world in Guyana now. You can't go in a place unless you're unvaccinated. These vaccines were developed for the Wuhan strain. We are now at Delta. You cannot mandate something that was developed for something, I know there's something else new.
Thank you, Mr. Ashby. I think in all fairness, that is precisely why we've invited you here, to hear your feelings on this very contentious topic and we appreciate your submission this evening. We also have in the online forum, Juan Goodman. Juan Goodman, are you prepared to join us?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, good evening to everyone. What I would like to say is, I would like to, one, commend the Ministry of Health for their hard work, for all the doctors, the environmental health personnel, all the personnel that have been working really hard to keep this, keep this under control. Their efforts are greatly appreciated. However, I do have some query relating to the EUA, which is the Emergency Use Authorization Status of the vaccines. We have, those who have been following the news are aware that the FDA along with Pahoe, the WHO have obviously indicated that these vaccines were rolled out for emergency use and that there's still a lot of unknowns. I would like the Ministry of Health personnel to be able to comment on how we should consider that in light of the fact that they, they are not definite guarantees relating to medium term and long-term COVID, the vaccination related issues. Someone's got to liability before, but I think that that's a really big concern for many persons that there is a lot that is unknown with respect to consequences of actually taking the vaccines. I would also like to find out if the Ministry of Health has undertaken any local studies or if they plan to do so in the near future about persons who have taken vaccines, especially the ones who already are immunocompromised to some extent? Because it's okay to take all these studies from overseas, but we are a different population, a different genetic population, if I might say, and the effects that it might have on persons across the world might not be the same here in Barbados. So I would like to find out if the UWI in conjunction with the Ministry of Health plans to undertake any studies in this particular area. Thank you.
So what I say is that the ministry has developed a good working relationship with the University of the West Indies and actually they help us with some modeling and projections. That's how we look a bit into the future based on what is done. So that relationship will continue. They have in principle said that they are willing to do more with respect to lending that type of academic oversight to what the ministry does. With respect to emergency use, as I was preparing for this meeting, I tried to get the understanding of the whole issue surrounding emergency use. And I think the trigger was that there was certainly a public health crisis. Secondly, the issue was that there was a lot of funding available to do quick interventions. And thirdly, that the vaccine manufacturers were up to the task. And what they did was they compressed the standard period of time for approval of vaccines is five to 10 years. And what they did, did was compress that period within a year and based on not compromising the phase one, phase two and phase three approaches. And therefore, the vaccines, when the WHO and SAGE approved, the vaccines went through complete phase three trials and were found to be safe. So you're right. In the future, we may understand a bit more of the long-term effects of vaccination. However, the way how I see it, it was based on an urgent public health need and the experts coming together to, to give vaccines available to the public that are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. George. Ladies and gentlemen, we have actually come to the end of our session this afternoon. I will ask the face-to-face audience if there is any final comment that anyone would wish to make. Yes, I see a hand raised. If you could approach the microphone for us, please.
I don't know how to handle it.
Someone will come and help you to lower the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cecilia Brown and I'm from Saint Michael, South East. My thing is that I have no problem taking the vaccine, but I believe what is in a lot of people's fear is that, okay, you have a lot of underlying problems, you're dealing with a doctor all the time and you go now to a stranger now that don't know nothing about your sickness or nothing like that and they take, you're taking out the vaccine. But I wonder if you could go to your own doctor and the doctor know your sickness and stuff like that and be able to tell you, well, you can take it now or when you can take it, whatever. Because that, I feel that that is a lot, and a lot of people are mine too. Because I myself, I have no problem with taking it, but having some issues have me that hold back. So my doctor- So my doctor, when I go to my doctor, he knows a lot about me or she knows a lot about me. And they'll be able to tell me, well, yes, Ms. Brown, you can take it now, when you can take it or hold off a little bit, right? So I want to know if the doctors, your doctor, will be able to give you the vaccine. Thank you very much.
I know, yes. I think that was a well-said suggestion. It's something that the Ministry of Health will be willing to look at. There are some logistical issues with respect to maintenance of cold chains. So vaccines, we are very, very careful within the Ministry of Health. I'll tell you this, we're trying to get other options for vaccines in Barbados, and we in the ministry have indicated one of those options to be Pfizer. And that is going to be an option which will require significant planning. We are already in the planning stages for that. Because the cold chain, these are ultra-cold chain vaccines. So I understand, and we would like to get there, that a person who has a good relationship with a primary care physician, and it's something that we will be willing to consider. And I think that's a good note to, in closing. Thanks so much.
I just want to add, Chair, that I want to say thank you to Cecilia, first of all, for attending. I did ask this afternoon for her to come and some of the others who I recognize have a certain hesitancy about taking the vaccination for a number of reasons. There's a lot of information circulating in the public domain. You know, there's lots of videos that are sent, certainly in the chats that I'm in as well and that they're in. And there's general uncertainty about what they should and they shouldn't do. But I felt that having the health professionals here this evening, having labor, having all of the social partnership here, that this was a perfect opportunity to ask some questions. And I'm glad that you've come forward, and I hope that others are equally encouraged to do the same. We may not answer all the questions in a way that everyone may want, but I think that it has given us certainly food for thought as we've listened to the discourse this evening. The truth of the matter is that that same question was raised in cabinet just on Thursday, if my colleagues would recall, by Minister Dugid. And he was giving the example of a situation in, I think it's Ontario, where they were able to do a full vaccination campaign within that particular province. And the question of whether or how they approached it was basically by having the general practitioners, who people were comfortable with, being the persons who administered it. And I know that that is an issue that Minister Boston, all of us, you know, not that we didn't think about it, but as Dr. George would have said, there are some logistical issues. We need to work through those. We need to see whether that perhaps, given the way in which Barbadian life is and the way in which we engage with certainly our medical practitioners, if that is a possibility. Because the truth is that, again, we don't know, we've never walked this road before. But all views and all ideas basically are worthy of listening to. We have a sub-cabinet, subcommittee. We are listening to the EOC. We listen to all of the medical health professionals. But the truth is, we also have to listen to the general public. So because we've had almost a third of the population vaccinated and there are persons in the population who don't agree that they should be vaccinated, it doesn't mean that your views don't matter. What matters is that we are prepared, as a social partnership, to listen. We are prepared to look at the legal issues, as Prime Minister Motley would have indicated a few weeks ago, to be able to get legal opinions to help guide the process. And while some may not listen to all that is said, there are those business persons who have listened to the process that we have put together as a social partnership. So I just want to say, thanks again, Cecilia. Again, thanks for this first session being able to happen. Thanks to all of the panels, certainly to the social partnership, and that we certainly look forward to the very next session where hopefully more stimulating thoughts can come through and perhaps even more recommendations as we move forward.
Thank you, Prime Minister. And now we do move to the vote of thanks, which will be given by Mr. Dennis De Pisa of C2South.
Thank you, Chairman. And I also thank the acting prime minister for assisting me in making it easier to give the vote of thanks. As the representative of the Congress of Trade Unions and Staff Associations of Barbados, I am pleased to have been part of this evening's proceedings as we address the subject of the COVID-19 immunization and the testing requirements. I believe it's a very important activity that we have pursued inasmuch that we have afforded the members of the public the opportunity to engage in discussion with the, I would call it, the national leadership. And on the issue which is obviously the active prime minister's support, too, very emotional and sensitive, and therefore, hearing all views is important so we can get a sense of not only thinking, but how we can actually proceed. But in saying all that, I would like to move to draw attention to a quotation made by a person by the name of Michael Moore. And I think it's very appropriate at this time. And this is what he wrote, saying, "Democracy is not a spectator sport. It is a participating event. If we do not participate in it, it ceases to be a democracy." I would hope that this quotation, that this would resonate right across the region at this time. Because we are not ignorant or unaware of what is happening right around us. And this exercise that we have here is part of a democracy, which is preserved and should be respected. And I hope that we continue in that vein and that our brothers and sisters across the region are also followed in a similar vein. I would like to say that your participation and your contributions this evening have been well received, appreciated, and valued. We accept that you have the option of peaceful protests, but also you also respect and have the opportunity where you can let your voices be heard by your questions and stuff that you place. So as we all retire from the hall this evening, I would hope that we can give the assurance that your comments, your suggestions, or your ideas will receive the active consideration which they deserve. So I want to thank you, those who are present and those who are online, for taking part in this evening's proceedings. Let me, however, make another important point in that I believe that we have reached this point through what I call the lead role taken by the Congress of Trade Unions and Staff Associations of Barbados in making this issue one that we believe as a highly important constitutional and human rights issue to be addressed at our national sessions in the social partnership. And I think, I would like to say that I am happy that the collective wisdom of the social partnership has allowed us to have the opportunity to sit here and to bring the public into the political decision-making. And I think that that is important because the people, at the end of the day, the people have the final say. And you are here and demonstrating by your participation, whether online or in face-to-face, that you have the national interest at heart. I would like, however, at the same time, to thank the Ministry of Labor and Social Partnership Relations for coordinating this evening's event. It's a lot of work, and I'm sure that the P S and her team have done a great job in ensuring that we have the comforts that we have this evening. I would also like to acknowledge the contribution and attendance, such as their first and contributions and participation of the Honorable Santiago Bradshaw, Acting Prime Minister, also Minister Colin Jordan, Bill Fred Irams, and Lieutenant Colonel Jeffrey Bostick. I would also like to acknowledge the input of Dr. Kevin George, our chief medical officer, and members of his team, representative of the Barbados Private Sector Association, led by my colleague, Brother Edward Clark. And I would also like to acknowledge the contributions of the technical officers from the Ministry of Labor and Social Partnership Relations and the Ministry of Health and Wellness. It would, however, be remiss of me if I were not to thank the principal and his team here at the Alexandra School for ensuring that the facility has been made available to us and obviously well-prepared. And clearly, a lot of credit has also have to be given to the Commissioner of Police and the members of the Royal Barbados Police Force, whose presence here and who manage the security and ready for this event, and we all have to give thanks to them. I would also acknowledge the contribution of Dr. Leslie Rock, who made the presentation on behalf of the Ministry of Health and Wellness this evening. I would not forget those who we are depending on to ensure that the public at large is well aware of all of the points that will be made at this evening's session. And therefore, the media will thank you for your support and for the coverage that you are going to give to this event. I would hope I have not omitted anyone, but I would say this much. I would like to thank very much the moderator, Brother, I say Brother, I hope you will accept that, Brian Reese, the chairman of NACOSH, who has really done an admirable job in managing this evening's proceedings. So what is left for me to say, that we look forward to having you or the others persons who have not joined the forum as yet, to do so at the next meeting on the 11th of August at the Princess Margaret School. And we hope that we can further hear the voices and the commentaries and all those ideas that will filter out and to help us to inform the decision-making process on this very important national subject. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. De Pisa. Ladies and gentlemen, though we have come to the end of this evening's session, we will continue to engage you across the island through the next three sessions which are scheduled. And those scheduled sessions are on the 11th of August at the Princess Margaret School, on the 16th of August at the Dayton Griffith School, the 18th of August will be the final session at the Combe Mer School. And both of those sessions, as this evening, will be conducted face-to-face as well as online from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. So I would ask you, if you're interested, to please go to the G I, the Government Information Services website, I'm sorry, at www.gisbarbados.gov.bb to see the information on these sessions and to register for the follow-up sessions, whether online or face-to-face. I wish to close this evening by offering a comment that was presented to us in the online forum earlier. And unfortunately, the person who presented it, the name on the comment is Miss Gem 6. So I can't give her full credit by name, but I thought that what she shared with us is something that we need to constantly remember. And that is that the appropriate actions still need to be taken whenever we are in public, whenever we are interacting with our family and friends, social distancing, wearing of masks, not touching your face, not in any way allowing for the spread of this very transmissible virus. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out this evening. Please continue to be safe, and we look forward to sharing with you in the future. Have a good evening.